Hello and welcome to Daily Memory Lab. This is study session number five. In today's study session, we will revise the last five to six pages of E-way bill chapter. Yesterday, we finished round one of E-way bill chapter and we have also completed two rounds of page number one to nineteen of that same chapter. From page number twenty to page number twenty-six of that chapter, we have second round pending. So that we will do first and then I will proceed to study supply under GST chapter. So before we begin our study session, let us set the intentions first. Now I am going to study for thirty to forty minutes with full focus. In this study session, I lower down all my expectations and embrace imperfection. I may or may not get big breakthroughs in this study session and I am totally okay with it. I will most likely make mistakes in the next thirty to sixty minutes and if I make them, I am not going to judge myself. I embrace my mistakes and reset my ambitions. My goal is not to achieve perfection. My goal is only to make a tiny bit of progress in the next thirty to sixty minutes. With that said, let us proceed to revise E-way bill the last six pages. Topic number thirteen, situations where E-way bill is not required to be generated. Notwithstanding anything explained above, no E-way bill is required to be generated in the following cases. First situation where the goods being transported are the ones given below. So they have given a specific list. So if the goods are covered under this following list, you don't need to prepare E-way bill even if the consignment value exceeds fifty thousand. Liquified petroleum gas for supply to household and non-domestic exempt category customers. Charosin oil sold under PDS, postal baggage transported by Department of Posts, natural or cultured pearls and precious or semi-precious stones, precious metals and metals clad with precious metal belonging to chapter seventy-one. Jewelry, goldsmiths and silver smithsware and other articles belonging to chapter seventy-one, excepting imitation jewelry seven-one-one-seven, okay. Currency used for personal and household effects, coral unworked and worked coral, fine. Where goods are being transported by a non-motorized conveyance, okay. Where the goods are being transported from the customs port, airport, air cargo complex and land customs station to an inland container depot or a container freight station for clearance by customs, okay. In respect of movement of goods within such areas as are notified under rule one thirty-eight, sub-rule fourteen, sub-rule D of the state or union territory GST rules in that particular state or union territory. Where the goods other than D Oil D K being transported are exempt from tax which we saw pretty much at the early part of this chapter itself. If the very much supply itself is exempt, then you don't have to create E-way bill for that. Okay. Point number F, where the goods being transported are alcoholic liquor for human consumption, petroleum crude, high-speed diesel, high-speed diesel, motor spirit commonly known as petrol, natural gas or aviation turbine fuel. Where the supply of goods being transported is treated as no supply under GST under schedule three of the CGST Act, okay. Where the goods are being transported under customs bond from an inland container depot or a container freight station to a customs port, airport, air cargo complex and a land customs station or from one customs station or customs port to another customs station or customs port or under custom supervision or under customs seal, okay. Where goods are being transported are transit cargo from or to Nepal or Bhutan, okay. Where the goods being transported are exempt from tax under notification number seven of two thousand seventeen C T R twenty-eight six two thousand seventeen, supply of goods by the C S D to the unit-run canteens or to the authorized customers and supply of goods by the unit-run canteens to the authorized customers and notification number twenty-six slash two thousand seventeen C T R uh twenty-one-nine two thousand seventeen. Supply of heavy water and nuclear fuels by Department of Atomic Energy to Nuclear Power Corporation of India Limited, okay. K, any movement of goods caused by defense formation under Ministry of Defense as a consignor or consignee, okay. Where the consignor of goods is the central government, government of any state or a local authority for transport of goods by rail. Where empty cargo containers are being transported, okay. Where the goods are being transported up to a distance of twenty kilometers, up to a distance of twenty kilometers from the place of business of the consignor to a waybridge for payment or from the waybridge back to the place of business of the said consignor subject to the condition that the movement of goods is accompanied by a delivery chalan issued in accordance with rule fifty-five. Just let me read this one point alone for one more time, okay. Goods are being transported up to a distance of, okay. So in this case of waybridge situations, okay. So let's say I have to transport a big consignment. I have to know the tar weight and net weight of the vehicle before I commence the transport. For that purpose, I will send my goods to a nearby waybridge. So I don't have to create E-way bill as long as that consignment is covered with a delivery chalan, accompanied with a delivery chalan, okay. Where empty cylinders for packing of liquefied petroleum gas are being moved for reasons other than supply, okay. Point number fourteen, documents and devices to be carried by a person in charge of a conveyance, rule one thirty-eight A. The person in charge of a conveyance shall carry the invoice or bill of supply or delivery chalan as the case may be and a copy of the E-way bill in physical form or the E-way bill number in electronic form or mapped to a RFID embedded onto the conveyance except in case of movement of goods by rail or by air or vessel in such a manner as may be notified by the commissioner, okay. Carrying E-way bill number in electronic form implies that person in charge of conveyance can merely quote the E-way bill number to the proper tax officer. Tax officer will do all the requisite verifications based on that number, okay, understood. RFID's are radio frequency identification device used for identification, okay. This is exactly what I said yesterday, which is an open loop. I really still don't, not able to visualize you know, in a concrete way and what is RFD, how the verification is going to happen, the practical aspect of it. So this is a, this is one open loop which is still pending and there is the other open loop called what is over-dimensional cargo, some single indivisible unit. Uh, you know, defined by some motor vehicles act, something we saw a couple of days back. So those two topics are still pending, okay, that I keep, I have kept in mind. Maybe in a couple of days, I will get to this, I will get to research about this. When I get an answer, I will share with you in the next some, in future study sessions, okay. Invoice reference number instead of tax invoice. In case E invoice is issued, the QR code having an embedded invoice number in it may be produced electronically for verification by the proper officer instead of the physical copy of such tax invoice, okay. In such a case, the registered person will not have to upload the information in part A of E-way bill for generation of E-way bill and the same shall be auto-populated by the common portal on the basis of the information furnished in the prescribed form relating to E invoice, okay. Commissioner may by notification require a class of transporters to obtain a unique RFID, radio frequency identification, what is the other identification device, okay. The commissioner may by notification require a class of transporters to obtain a unique RFID and get the said device embedded onto the conveyance and map the E-way bill to the RFID prior to the movement of goods, okay. Documents instead of E-way bill, where circumstances so warrant, the commissioner may by notification require the person in charge of the conveyance to carry the following documents instead of the E-way bill. Tax invoice they can carry or bill of supply or bill of entry or a delivery chalan where the goods are transported for reasons other than by way of supply, okay. Point number fifteen, verification of documents and conveyances, rule one thirty-eight B. The commissioner of an officer, commissioner or an officer empowered by him in this behalf may authorize the proper officer to intercept any conveyance to verify the E-way bill in physical or electronic form for all elec- for all interstate and intrastate movement of goods, okay, understood. The commissioner shall get RFID readers installed at places where the verification of movement of goods is required to be carried out and verification of movement of vehicles shall be done through such device readers where the E-way bill has been mapped with the said device, okay. The physical verification of conveyances shall be carried out by the proper officer as authorized by the commissioner or an officer empowered by him in this behalf. However, on receipt of such, of specific information on evasion of tax, physical verification of a specific conveyance can also be carried out by any other officer after obtaining necessary approval of the commissioner or an officer authorized by him in this behalf, okay. Sixteenth point, inspection and verification of goods, rule one thirty-eight C. A summary report of every inspection of goods in transit shall be recorded online by the proper officer in part A of a prescribed form within twenty-four hours of inspection and the final report in part B of said form shall be recorded within three days of such inspection. However, where the circumstances so warrant, the commissioner or any other officer authorized by him may on sufficient cause being shown, extend the time for recording of the final report in part B of said form for a period, for a further period not exceeding three days, okay. So in case some officer has inspected the goods, some proper officer has inspected the goods in transit from some vehicle, then within twenty-four hours of such inspection, they have to fill a form A and a summary report shall be recorded based on that. And then within three days from such inspection, they have to finish the final report in part B. And in case there is some specific situation, some exceptional situation, they can get a further period of another extension for three days. The period of twenty-four hours or as the case may be three days shall be counted from the midnight of the date on which the vehicle was intercepted, okay. So let's say I am sending a goods vehicle now and my vehicle got exactly intercepted and checked around, let's say two o'clock this afternoon. So the twenty-four hour period commences from twelve o'clock midnight, let's say eleven fifty-nine. From now, it will go till ten P M, uh, ten hours for eleven fifty-nine, twelve midnight. And from that time onwards, the twenty-four hours and the three days will begin, okay. Where the physical verification of goods being transported on any conveyance has been done during transit at one place within the state or union territory or in any other state or union territory, no further verification of the said conveyance shall be carried out again in the state or union territory unless a specific information relating to evasion of taxes made available subsequently. So, okay, if one, one interception and one verification has been done or in any other state, no further physical verification of the said conveyance shall be carried out until it is, it has reached its destination unless again they get a new round of information, okay. Point number seventeen, facility for uploading information regarding detention of vehicle. Where a vehicle has been intercepted and detained for a period exceeding thirty minutes, the in, the transporter may upload the said information in a specified form on the common portal, okay. Blocking of E-way bill facility, rule one thirty-eight E. Blocking of E-way bill generation facility means disabling a taxpayer from generating the E-way bill. Blocking of GST IN for E-way bill generation would be, would only be for the defaulting supplier GST IN and not for the defaulting recipient or transporter GST IN. Suspended GST IN cannot generate E-way bill as supplier. However, suspended GST IN can get the E-way bill generated as recipient or as transported, okay. As per, as per rule one thirty-eight E, no person including a consignor, consignee, transporter, an e-commerce operator or a courier agency shall be allowed to furnish the information in part A of Form GST E W B one in respect of any outward movement of goods of a registered person who being a person paying tax under a composition scheme has not furnished the statement for payment of self-assessed tax for two consecutive quarters or being a person paying tax under regular scheme has not furnished the returns for a consecutive period of two tax periods or being a person paying tax under a regular scheme has not furnished GST R one for any two months or quarters as the case may be and being a person whose registration has been suspended under provisions of rule twenty-one of the CGST rules. Okay, hmm. Nice, okay. However, commissioner or jurisdictional commissioner may on receipt of an application from a registered person in the pres- in prescribed form on sufficient cause being shown and for reasons to be recorded in writing by order in prescribed form although furnishing of the said information in part A of GST E W B one subject to prescribed conditions and restrictions. An order rejecting said request shall not be passed without giving the said person a reasonable opportunity of being heard. The permission granted or rejected by the commissioner of state tax or commissioner of union territory tax shall be deemed to be granted or as the case may be rejected by the commissioner, okay. Point number nineteen, it may be noted that the expressions transported by railways, transportation of goods by railways, transportation of goods by rail and movement of goods by rail used in the provisions discussed above does not include cases where leasing of parcel space by railways takes place. Okay, let's go to question number uh six, example six. Mister A, a registered person paying tax under regular scheme in Delhi has not filed Form GSTR one for the last two months. Mister B, Haryana, a regular return filer wants to generate an E-way bill for goods to be supplied to Mister A. So here we saw this is an example relating to this blocking of E-way bill. Now Mister A is an offender who has not filed GST IR one for two months, so he becomes, you know, covered under one thirty-eight E. So Mister A cannot file, I mean, A cannot generate E-way bill as a supplier. However, he can generate, he can generate E-way bill. He can still get E-way bill generated as a recipient or as transporter. So in this case, A is the supplier, B is, sorry, B is the supplier, A is the recipient. So A will not have any problems as to getting this E-way bill generated. So see the answer here. There will be no restriction in generating E-way bill for Mister B who is making, who is making the outward movement of goods as he is a regular return filer. Mister A wants to generate E-way bill in respect of an outward supply of goods to Mister H. E-way bill generation is blocked in this case as it is an outward supply of uh outward supply of goods for Mister A who has not filed GST IR. So he will be covered under one thirty-eight E, that rule, okay. Last, taxing voice or bill of supply to accompany transport of goods, rule fifty-five A. Person in charge of the conveyance shall carry a copy of the tax invoice or the bill of supply issued in accordance with the provisions of rules forty-six, forty-six A or forty-nine in a case where such person is not required to carry an E-way bill under these rules, okay. Now that we have completed reading this E-way bill chapter. So this is also complete, round two is also complete. Uh, I will share my thoughts quickly before we go to the next chapter. I, I was able to say, I, I am able to say that after two rounds of reading, we started this on third of October, so in the last four days, la- so last four days or last five days including today. We have completed this chapter for two rounds and my confidence level, I would say, is a five or six out of ten. There are some provisions which I read and I was able to understand it very clearly like the, the validity of the E-way bill, uh, the two hundred kilometer thing, the twenty kilometer thing. And there are certain provisions, again, I am able to remember clearly the goods that are exempt, like if the goods move are in transit for Nepal or Bhutan or if it's defense-oriented goods or if it's alcohol-related goods, petroleum-related goods, you don't need to have E-way bill generated for that. So fairly I am able to recollect a certain bit of points. I'm, I'm, I'm able to have good confidence about such points. But still there are certain areas where still the framing aspect, the language itself is kind of uh has become, uh, they sound a little difficult for me, like commissioner, jurisdictional commissioner, commissioner of state, commissioner of union, union territory. I, I think that we won't be able to avoid that complication in the later part of this GST when this procedural, this assessment-oriented topics, we won't be able to avoid this confusion. But I strongly believe we have just completed two rounds of this. We still have three rounds. Interestingly, we are starting the third round of this chapter right tomorrow. So tomorrow, the first thing we will be reading is, again, we will start from the first uh six to seven pages. We will read that again one more time tomorrow. So I think as the readings increase, the round of readings increase, uh, we will be having a much better clarity, I expect to have. Uh, by round five, I expect to have at least eight point five or nine out of ten level of uh understanding and confidence and also memory about this topic. So let's, with that said, let us take a, a bit of gap for this E-way bill chapter. Let us move on to supply under GST chapter. So this chapter has ninety-eight pages, including all this revision and everything, test your knowledge and everything. So test your knowledge, revision. Yeah, so eighty-four core pages of this chapter. Let us do them slowly. So even if we manage to study seven to eight pages per day, we will be able to cover this chapter maybe in two weeks, ten, twelve days maximum. So let us start. Now I am planning to study probably till two point one zero, okay. So unli- until we begin this analysis part, I am planning to read. Again, these are all just core definitions like proper Barack provisions. So I am not going to try to interpret it or trying to understand and explain or like say it again one more time to you. I am just going to read through, let my eyes and my brain go through these words and frame and, you know, just make sure that primary level of input happens, that's it I am going to do. Again, even this first three to four pages are fully filled with definitions. So we just have to like jump into the, you know, flowing river, like that we will jump into it. The clarity part, knowledge part will happen on its own time, okay. So let me start. Introduction. A taxable event is any transaction or occurrence that results in a tax consequence, okay. Before leaving any tax, taxable events needs to be ascertained. It is the foundation stone of any taxation system. It determines the point at which tax uh, at which point the tax would be uh levied, okay. Under the earlier indirect tax regime, the framework of taxable event in various statutes was prone to catena of interpretations resulting in litigation since decades. I agree it, I agree, I agree to this. Um, the controversy is largely relating to, related to issues like whether a particular process amounted to manufacture or not, whether the sale was predetermined, sale, where, whether a particular transaction was a sale of goods or rendering of services. Yeah, previously there used to be huge amount of confusion, uh, easily you can, one can get into debates and also there used to be lots of confusion regarding classification. I understand, yeah, the previous indirect tax regime was a bit of, uh, it was extremely dicey, so let's see. The GST laws resolve these issues by laying down one comprehensive taxable event called supply, that is supply of goods or services or both, okay. Various taxable events namely manufacture, sale, rendering of service, purchase, entry into a territory of state etcetera that existed prior to introduction of GST have been done away with in favor of just one event supply, yeah. So manufacture, sale, rendering of service, purchase, everything, they have shrunk and concise everything into one definition called supply, okay. The GST law by levying tax on the supply of goods and or services departs from the historically understood concept of taxable event under the state vat laws, excise laws, then service tax law, that is sale, manufacture and provision of services respectively, okay. In the GST regime, the entire value of supply of goods and or services is taxed in an integrated manner unlike the earlier indirect taxes which were charged independently either on the manufacture or sale of goods or on the provision of services. Relevant definitions, okay. What is meant by goods? So let's see the definitions now. Section two, clause fifty-two, goods means every kind of mobile property other than money and securities but includes actionable claim, growing crops, grass and things attached to or forming part of the land which are agreed to be severed before supply or under contract of supply, okay. So every kind of mobile property, so they started with a very blanket definition and then they excluded a certain thing called money and securities and then they included some specific things like actionable claim, growing crops. So plants which I am going to cut before I sell it to people. Okay, so the nurseries and the gardens where they actually grow the plant and then they you know, shift it into a pot with soil and then they transport it as a proper goods. Yeah, they will be covered under supply only. They will be covered in the definition of goods only, okay. Services means anything other than goods, money and securities but includes activities relating to the use of money or its conversion by cash or by any mode from one form, currency or denomination to another form, currency or denomination for which uh separate consideration is charged. Basically money exchange they are talking about. And services means anything other than goods, okay. Explanation, it is clarified that the expression services includes facilitating or arranging transactions in securities, okay. So stock brokerage, okay, and then this investment banking. They will be covered under this definition of service, okay. Principle, principle means a person on whose behalf an agent carries on the business of supply or receipt of goods or services or both, okay. So they have defined the principle through the usage of agent, okay. Next, competent authority means such authority as maybe notified by the government, okay. Family means the spouse and children of the person and the parents, grandparents, brothers and sisters of the person if they are wholly or mainly dependent on the said person, okay. So that also it includes parents, grandparents, brothers and sisters, okay. So in income tax, you have this relative definition, isn't it? So some even, even you will get like brother-in-law, sister-in-law type of, you know, lenial ascendant, lenial descendant and all used to give. So it's not like that here. So family means spouse, children, main people. And then you have parents, grandparents, brothers, sisters of the person, okay. Government means the central government, okay, fine, because we are reading, I think CGST. So government means here it will be central government. Local authority means a panchayat as defined in clause D of article two forty-three of the constitution, a panchayat or a municipality as defined in clause E of two forty-three P of the constitution. A municipal committee, a zilla, parishad, a district board and any other authority legally entitled to or entrusted by the central government or any state government with the control or management of a municipal or local fund, okay. A cantonment board as defined in section three of the Cantonments Act two thousand six. A regional council or a district council constituted under the sixth schedule to the constitution. A development board constituted under article three seventy-one and article three seventy-one J of the constitution. So we are reading what is called a local authority. So government means government, local authority means all these things. A development board and then finally a regional council constituted under three seventy-one A of the constitution, okay. What is consideration? What is consideration? Consideration in related to, in relation to the supply of goods or services or both includes any payment made or to be made whether in money or otherwise in respect of, in response to or for the inducement of the supply of goods or services or both whether by the recipient or by any other person but shall not include any subsidy given by the central government or a state government, okay? The monetary value of any act or forbearance, uh, forbearance in respect of, in response to or for the inducement of the supply of goods or services or both. Whether, whether by the recipient or by any other person but shall not include any subsidy given by the central government or a state government. Okay, fine. However, a deposit given in the, in respect of the supply of goods or services or both shall not be considered as payment made for such a supply unless the supplier applies such deposit as consideration for the said supply, okay? The definition is, I would not say it's a very pleasant, very easy sounding, easy understandable definition. Lots of clauses, lots of commas in between. I have to read at least three, four more times to make a sense of this, but anyway. Now let me go to the next point which is actionable claim. Means a claim to any debt other than a debt secured by mortgage of immovable property or by hypothecation or pledge of movable property or to any beneficial interest in mobile property not in the possession either actual or constructive of the claimant which the civil courts recognize as affording grounds for relief whether such debt or beneficial interest be existent, accruing, conditional or contingent. Section two, one of CGST Act read with section three of the Transfer of Property Act, okay? Any debt other than, so they have excluded everything that follows here. So we have to, if we have to understand what is not covered here, so we have to read this, you know, in detail. Fine, okay. Manufacture. Manufacture means processing of raw material or inputs in any manner that results in emergence of a new product having a distinct name, character and use and the term manufacturer shall be construed accordingly, okay? Fine. Money means the Indian legal tender or any foreign currency, cheque, promissory note, bill of exchange, letter of credit, draft, pay order, traveller's cheque. Money, order, money order, postal or electronic remittance of or any other instrument recognized by the Reserve Bank of India when used as a consideration to settle an obligation or exchange with Indian legal tender of another denomination but shall not include any currency that is held for its numismatic value. So what is numismatic value? So people, there are people who collect currencies, isn't it? So they will collect like five paise, ten paise and all, they will collect old twenty-five paise and all. As they also collect foreign currencies, old notes. So that is not considered as money because that is not being collected for the sake of transacting but is, that is just collected for being sake of collecting like people, how they collect stamps and all. So that is one thing, okay, fine. Taxable supply, money means, a taxable supply means a supply of goods or services or both which is leviable to tax under this act, okay? Taxable territory means the territory to which the provisions of this act apply. So there are some easy sounding definitions and then there are some very, very not so pleasant definitions. Definitions like consideration, actionable claim. These are all little, uh, we have to read like five, six times to make, get them uh, understandable. Okay, we will, we will make them more friendly in the upcoming rounds but there are some straightforward definitions like government, family, competent authority, taxable supply, taxable territory etcetera. Now let's talk about non-taxable territory. Non-taxable territory means the territory which is outside the taxable territory, understandable. India means the territory of India as referred to in article one of the constitution. It's territorial waters, seabed and subsoil, underlying such waters, continental shelf, excluding economic zones or any other maritime zone as referred to in the territorial waters, continental shelf, exclusive economic zone and other maritime zones act nineteen seventy six and the airspace above its territory and the territorial waters. Okay, so fine. Supplier in relation to any goods or services or both shall mean the person supplying the said goods or services or both and shall include an agent acting as such on behalf of such supplier in relation to the goods or services or both supplied. So it's not that only principal will get covered. So even if there is a person who is acting as an agent for that principal who is actually the one who is doing the supply, so they will also be treated as supplier. However, a person who organizes or arranges directly or indirectly supply of specified actionable claims including a person who owns, operates or manages digital or electronic platform for such supply shall be deemed to be a supplier of such actionable claims whether such actionable claims are supplied by him or through him and whether the, whether consideration money or money is worth including virtual digital assets for supply of such actionable claims is paid or conveyed to him, through him or pay, or placed at his disposal in any manner and all the provisions of this act shall supply, shall apply to such supplier of specified actionable claims as if he is the supplier liable to pay the tax in relation to the supply of such actionable claim. Welcome to CA. Great definition, great definition. I will say I have kind of, it's a two out of ten type of definition. I must be reading this at least again five to ten times. They lost me after the fourth sentence, so. Okay, let's read anyway. Recipient. Recipient of supply of goods and or services means where a consideration is payable for the supply of goods or services or both, the person who is liable to pay that consideration. Where no consideration is payable for the supply of goods, the person to whom the goods are delivered or made available or to whom possession or use of the goods is given or made available. And where no consideration is payable for the supply of a service, the person to whom the service is rendered. And any reference to a person to whom supply is made shall be construed as a reference to the recipient of the supply. Okay, fine. And shall include an agent acting as such on behalf of the recipient in relation to the goods or services or both supplied. Section two, clause ninety three. Okay, person, a person includes an individual, a HOF, a company, a firm, an LLP, an association of persons or body of individuals whether incorporated or not in India or outside India. Any corporation established by or under any central or state or provincial act or government company as defined under section two, clause forty five of the Companies Act. Any body corporate incorporated by or under the laws of a country outside India. A cooperative society registered under any law relating to cooperative societies, a local authority, central government or state government, society as defined under the Societies Registration Act eighteen sixty. Trust, every artificial juridical person not falling above, okay? Our discussion in the study material will principally be confined to the provisions of CGST and IGST as the specific state GST laws are outside the scope of syllabus, good, good. As if CGST and IGST portions are small enough. Great, they have excluded CGST, SGST laws. Great then. Concept of supply, section seven of the CGST Act, let us understand supply in detail. Section seven, meaning and scope of supply. Section eight, taxability of composite and mixer supplies. Schedule one, activities to be treated as supply even if made without consideration. Schedule two, activities or transactions to be treated as supply of goods or as supply of services. Okay, activities or transaction which shall be treated neither as supply of goods nor as supply of services. Statutory provisions, section seven, meaning and scope of supply, subsection one. Supply includes all forms of supply of goods or services or both such as sale, transfer, barter, exchange, license, rental, lease or disposal made or agreed to be made for a consideration by a person in the course or furtherance of business, okay? Clause AA, the activities or transactions by a person other than an individual to its members or constituents or vice versa for cash, deferred payment or other valuable consideration. Okay, explanation, for the purposes of this clause, it is hereby clarified that not withstanding anything contained in any other law for the time being in force or any judgment, decree or order of any court, tribunal or authority, the person and its members or constituents shall be deemed to be two separate persons and the supply of activities or transactions interse shall be deemed to take place from one person to, one such person to another. So I think this is like group company transactions or like, uh, not group companies. Same company having two different branches of movement from one branch to another branch, I think it will be deemed as supply. I think this is the definition that brings the transaction also under its coverage, okay? Clause B, importation of services for a consideration whether or not in the course or furtherance of business, okay? The activity specified in schedule one made or agreed to be made without a consideration, okay? One A. Supply includes where certain activities or transactions constitute a supply in accordance with the provision of subsection one, they shall be treated either as supply of goods or supply of services as referred to in schedule two, okay? Two, not withstanding anything contained in subsection one, activities or transactions specified in schedule three or such activities or transactions undertaken by the central government, a state government or any local authority in which they are engaged as public authorities as may be notified by the government or uh, government on the recommendations of the council shall be treated neither as a supply of goods nor as a supply of services, okay? So they are excluding certain things because not withstanding anything contained in subsection one, activities specified in schedule three, okay? Apart from whatever they said in one, so activities include, activities specified in schedule three is also, they are also covered under supply, I guess. So let me, anyway, when we come to schedule three, we will know. Oh, no, 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 no. Schedule three, what does it say? Activities or transactions which shall be treated neither as supply of goods nor as supply of services. Sorry, sorry about the confusion. Yeah, okay, anyway, they have said here also. Not withstanding anything contained in subsection one, activities mentioned in schedule three and such activities or transactions undertaken by the central government, a state government or any local authority in which they are engaged as a public authority, okay, as may be notified. So if government is doing certain work in the form of public authority itself, not in the form of maybe commercial aspect but in the form of a public service aspect. In those situations, I think those transactions will be excluded from the coverage of supply, okay? Third sub, uh, division of this provision. Subject to the provisions of subsections one, one A and two, government may on the recommendations of the council specify by notification the transactions that are to be treated as supply of goods and not as supply of services and they are supply of services and not as supply of goods, okay? I think this is for those transactions which might have a composite character to them. It can also look like a supply of goods and it can also look like a supply of services. So for those transaction gray area, such gray areas, I think this clause, this subsection is there to clarify that no, no, this is fully supply of goods, no, no, this is fully supply of services. I think this is the clarificatory, um, this is for like a decider section, subsection. Okay, so we have covered the first ten pages of this new chapter. It was much more trickier than what we saw in E-way bill. But that's okay, that's okay, anyway. Uh, we did, our goal is not to have a perfect understanding of everything in the first attempt itself. We have just done a very tiny bit of progress in this, whatever be the amount of time that you stayed with us. The point is, we now knew what we didn't know previously. So we saw all these things. Yes, they are above our control as of now, particularly these definitions like this. Let us take our time, let us take like three, four rounds. Things are still under control only. Then after that, we will have a grip over all these things. Let us not lose spirit, I have not lost spirit. So in case you have stayed with me in this study session till now, great, thank you so much for, you know, being a part of this experiment. I hope this, whatever be the amount of time, thirty to forty minutes of your time, I hope it was worthwhile. Do join the sessions every day, tomorrow, day after tomorrow and so on. And also drop in the comment section like completed session five, completed session four, whichever session that you are watching. If you have stayed till the end of the session, feel free to comment. It is like a good, good validation for me that people are also watching this, people are staying till the end. So it encourages me to come the next day and, you know, uh, carry out this experiment with better spirits, okay? So I will see you tomorrow, study, in study session six. Thank you so much, I'll see you tomorrow.